Maybe it's still on.
Ready? I now call to order the North Canton City Council meeting for February 28, 2022. Time is 7:00 PM. Opening prayer, Mayor Walder.
Thank you. Mr. President, please stand if you're able. Heavenly Father, we come tonight asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds community. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, Ben, would you please call the roll?
Member Matheny?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Member Shroya?
Here.
Member McLeaster?
Here.
Member Revolt?
Here.
Member Wyrick?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Seven present.
Thank you. Kind of a motion and a second to approve as presented, the minutes from February 7, 2022, committee of the whole and city council.
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we will have the recognition of the public. Members of the public wishing to address council may do so. Each speaker will have a five minutes. Please begin by stating your name and address. As a reminder, the rules we posted on the screen and termination violation of our violation of the rules will be grounds for your termination. Right there.
Yep.
Welcome.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Amy La Liberty. I currently have been for 28 years, resided at 1674 Ampler Avenue Southway. Four-four-seven. To be clear and concise, I believe we need concrete curb placement on the west field to Ampler Avenue. Grade on the hill is substantial. And we need to offset cost prohibitive erosion issues to the city of North Canton. Asphalt curves have, if reviewed, not cut the mustard. And if according to the law, the city employees are unavailable at this time. Thanks to oil production in the U.S. being shut down, foreign supply, concrete is $4.64 per square foot. Records will show asphalt has not withstood weather and snow removal. We need concerned people willing to consider future costs to this move this issue forward. Got to give kudos to the city of North Canton and Karen's city employees for their response to my concerns. I want to commend Matt first and considerate response last Thursday in completing a request I had for an incorrect drainage placement on my street. Also, kudos to councilman-at-large, Darryl Revolt, my councilman, John Orr, and city engineer, Rob, for all respect for my calls last Thursday regarding my concerns. This is what makes our city better. My only complaint is that I couldn't have any continued conversation. Yet I understand. I'm a citizen of North Canton and would love consideration of concrete curb placement on Westfield through Ampler Avenue. We have a considerable grade of elevation around a curb on our road that is causing erosion to the road. Asphalt curb has not cured the issue. Concrete pricing is competitive to asphalt. Using it now, we have our so concise that asphalt is not available. The better choice to curb. Their further erosion on an already compromised area, our street is have no idea what that means under our grandfather clause. Our street indeed needs those, but so much continually imagined being caught in places. Call that crucial area to further cut cotton. They have not given many thanks for the consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address the public? Okay. Moving on to old business, can I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 58-2021?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Darryl?
An ordinance amending Chapter 1133.08D Swimming Pools and Chapter 1707 Swimming Pools, Spas, and Hot Tubes, specifically subsection 1707.01B of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to lower the minimum required height of fencing for swimming pools to four feet.
Darryl? We have discussed this oddly. Four-foot height, standard fence height. We have eliminated also the requirement, the permission for what are called green fencing. And we have eliminated the requirement for fence for an above-ground pool, arguing that the height of the pool constitutes its own fence. No one spoke against this. Any council meeting, we're at the public carries before the motion. If there are no other comments, I move we adopt the third and final reading of ordinance 58-20.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 6-2022? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance amending Chapter 1127 Establishment of Districts and MAPs, specifically Section 1127.01 Establishment of Districts of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to remove the chart of districts contained therein.
Darryl? Editor, for our effort to clean up and guarantee consistency, we don't have in continuity between two sections. We have requirements in one location. That's it. One second. I move we adopt the same ordinance 6-20.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, can I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 7-2022?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance amending Title V Administration of the Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton in order to establish more efficient and effective zoning review and amendment processes.
Darryl?
Pretty much. This is only the second reading, it won't be great detail, but I do want to add a thing. If I, I want to draw your attention in which the rationale for these changes are outlined. You know, in the past, we had members of council prepare the minutes or the legislative, or the, prepare the committee minutes for action. I can never remember preparing committee minutes that had these details and clarity that would outline what we're doing. And this is the byproduct, this is the byproduct of clerk. And I appreciate this as I was looking, this, in preparation for the meeting, I was, I was struck by how great the record will be for what and why we've done this. And it's all here in two page, two and a half page, two pages. So, Ben, great job.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions or comments? We'll bring this back one more time for the third and final reading. Seeing none, then I move we adopt the second reading of ordinance 7-22.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, could I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 8-2022?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance amending Chapter 145 Planning Commission of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton.
Okay, this, this ordinance and the one that follows it established the, in the, in our code, the planning commission and the zoning board at their own separate entity, organizational entities. So again, this is to allow them to be treated, actually, but it specifies the requirements for quorum, requires the adoption of rules, sets monthly meetings, et cetera. So this is just, again, the guardrails for whole planning in this particular ordinance. Also, it for Z. Also, I might add, it also requires which many of you know, we have had problems in the past. So, the ordinance addresses those issues. If there are no other questions or comments, I will move the adoption of the second reading ordinance 8-22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, can I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 9-2022?
Revolt moves.
Warren, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance amending Chapter 147 Zoning and Building Standards Boards of Appeals of the Codified Ordinances of the City of North Canton.
Given the elegant explanation that was just provided, I move we adopt the second reading of ordinance 9-22.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we'll give Darryl a break here. Ordinance, can I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 22-2022?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance amending the boundaries of the wards of the city of North Canton pursuant to Article 2.02 of the Charter of the City of North Canton and the laws of the state of Ohio.
You want to handle, Darryl?
John, I don't want to steal your thoughts. Your first big piece here.
It will be eloquent, that's what we need to know.
And detail.
This ordinance is, every 10 years with the census, we need to take a look at the population of the different wards and stuff. Right now, there's a little bit of a variance under this new section, how we, where we district, we're within 2% all across. We haven't had much discussion on the first reading and it's on the board here, the current map and the new map. It's not that big of a change, they do extend a little bit. So I, I'll make a motion that we accept this. Second.
Revolt will second.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, can I have a motion and a second to suspend Council Rule 24 to allow for consideration of what will be ordinance 23-2022 without a committee report?
Revolt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And can I have a motion and a second to read by title only, ordinance 23-2022?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, Ben?
An ordinance continuing the community reinvestment area tax incentive agreement between the city of North Canton and 1303 through 1305 North Main Street and declaring the same to be an emergency.
For those of you who are new and in the audience, annually, the city is required by state law to review tax abatements on residential and commercial properties. That is done internally and then it is forwarded to the county entity, Turk, which also reviews those. That meeting is going to be held on March 14th in the city. So this is the reason that we have the emergency clause tonight, we're suspending the rules meeting, the decks cleared for that. This particular property is the only property we currently have under a CRA tax rate. That was subject to some discussion starting in 2016. So we're in, we're moving along on this one. And I might add that the property was in compliance with the requirements to, that's part of the process. Has the property complied with the representations made at the time of the occasion? The answer is yes. Mr. Duran?
I'd like to add, thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd also like to add that part of the reason for the necessity and the emergency is not just that the deadline is March 14th to have a meeting, but that we are also dependent upon the county auditor's office for information that is necessary to go into the reports that CRA approves when we go to the Turk. And that information doesn't become available until the end of February. So by the time we get it, we are always in this situation where they can't provide the information any sooner because they have to see if people are current on their taxes and they give them till the deadline to pay. And so every year, we're as far back as I can recall, this is the, the drill, there's really no way to change it. I just wanted to make sure for those that were here and might think, well, why not just start earlier? We can't.
Thank you for that clarification. I think the other thing is, is Patrick, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the city also files a report with the state of Ohio, does it not?
Yes, it does.
Department of Services, and so that report will be also issued contemporaneously in this session. Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I would move we adopt the first reading of ordinance 23-22.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules of council requiring three readings?
Revolt moves.
Warren, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 23-2022 under suspension of the rules?
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, department reports.
Thank you. I have no report tonight.
Right. Rob, go for it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of quick things. One, as we turn the calendars tonight to, to March tomorrow morning, we're getting ready to get going with construction. We've already got four of our projects bid out and, and ready to go. Have a pre-construction meeting tomorrow on our Pittsburgh water line, two. That's one that we had actually sold last year with the commissioners, we had CDBG funding in that. We sold it late because they don't get their check from HUD for a quarter million dollar grant till pretty late in the fall. So we look to get started, our contractor, weather permitting, is looking to get started out there on March 14th. So we'll have the orange barrels up. Now that one luckily is just outside the city. We did phase one in the city on Pittsburgh the year before last and, and then finished it last spring. And that one's going to be Pittsburgh up to about Ronell and then also all of Baton, if you know the area. So we'll be getting started there in a couple of weeks. And also, I had hinted at a meeting two weeks ago about some grants that are looking good. I still can't say anything, but they even look better. I had two meetings, a recent meeting this morning and another on Thursday, so eventually I'll be able to, to speak publicly. It's looking better and better and I even uncrossed one of my fingers, so.
That's Rob. Patrick?
Just a quick item, I think I had forwarded to you all the, some information regarding the EMS runs, fire runs for 2021. Just wanted to make sure publicly to make everybody aware, you know, I believe, my recollection is that for the whole year, it was approximately 3,300 plus runs. And the January numbers are in and it's like 360 and you compare it to January, a year ago, it was like two something, 250. So it's like 50% more runs in the month of January this year and we'll see how February shakes out, but outside my window today, there's nothing but fire trucks and ambulances running up and down the street. So it's important that we keep in mind that oftentimes when we don't hear them, that they're still responding, you know, on average, you know, 10 times a day. That's a lot for a community our size, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I just want to welcome our guests again, students are taking their reports. Thank you for choosing us to sit in for your, your political science or your government requirement. Thank you very much for your comments. It's very much appreciated, especially when you recognize our employees for their attention to detail or even attention for having a listening here and trying to understand everyone's situation here in the city. So thank you very much for bringing that to our attention. And most of all, again, I echo Patrick's questions about our safety services, but our services in general, I think we try to do the best that we can with what we have available to us and that we're very fortunate that we have the employees that we do in the positions and places that they do their duty the best that they can, so. Rob's got a good start on things. As the weather gets a little bit better, hopefully you'll see more activity going on in the city, so, thank you very much, President Strong.
Thank you. Ben?
I have no report this week.
Right. Let's move on to calendar reports. Start with Jamie.
All right, thank you very much. I just had a couple of things that I want to mention and unfortunately, he's not here this evening, but former councilman Greg Sarbaugh invited me to Lions Club meeting last week and I just thought it was neat to hear what they were all about and some of the things that they have planned. I guess as a aged-out JC, I've got a soft spot in my heart for local organizations, so I just thought it was great to, to be a part of their meeting and I, and I wanted to highlight a couple of things. One, they have their annual craft fair coming up on March 26th, which will be at the high school. But the other thing that I thought was really neat about this meeting is they actually had Andrea Legg from the North Canton Library there. And I guess I can brag a little bit because that is in Ward 1, but it was just neat to hear some of the obstacles they faced with COVID and how they've grown past that and some of their ideas for the future and it just really was neat and I, I really want to say that I think that we're lucky to have both of these entities in the city of North Canton. And lastly, just with the library, I'll throw out that she mentioned and was part of her presentation that they are doing a community survey and you can find that community survey on the library's website and that'll be available until March 11th, so. That's all I had for this evening.
All right, thank you. David?
Okay, so on the personnel and safety, excuse me, Chief Kemp had a celebration where we recognized some volunteers in our community. And I hear you cook a very mean breakfast for our crossing guard volunteers. We do appreciate them, very much so. They get, we got service award pens for being there, but they're volunteering their time to protect the young kids in our community, making sure that they get to school safely. And I'd just like to mention that Mike Freeday, Greg Mauer, Alan Humbert, Jackson Wendell, Robert Bracken, Larry Tripp, Jeff Calderer, and Antonio Scramtis, I'm not sure if I pronounced that correctly, I apologize, but we do appreciate their service and their help to the community. I'd also like to recognize Officer Matthew King. He is the Stark County Safe Communities 2021 Traffic Officer of the Year for Department Without a Designated Traffic Bureau. So Chief Kemp was there also to present Mr. King, or Officer King with his award. There was a banquet that followed that. But also, since being hired in 2019, Officer King has shown a dedication to making the streets of North Canton safer through his traffic, diligent traffic enforcement. But it's also noted that he has also earned a life-saving commendation in 2019 for rendering aid to an unresponsive cardiac patient. He was also just recognized for helping a nine-month-old that was choking and was able to do that. So we have a very exceptional police force and I think that their community involvement and keeping our safe and then our crossing guards helping the community also. Just wanted to point that out and bring that to everybody's attention.
Thank you. Stephanie?
Let's see, I was this week, kind of like you were able to go to an event, I was able to go to the Greater Stark Urban League Black and White Ball. And it was their 100th celebration and I think in the, the spirit of social equity and diversity and inclusion, it's important that we attend events like that, especially from a community like North Canton that isn't quite as diverse. And so to get out there and see, see what is going on throughout our community, because we have to just think of us as a small entity. I mean, we're all part of Stark County, Northeast Ohio, Ohio, you know, et cetera. So that was really nice and they did a nice job of representing or asking those that were in, in any leadership or, or government role to stand up. And it was kind of funny because Kurt and I stood up and then I thought that, okay, that was it, and then I sat back down and then Chris Smith is like, no, no, Stephanie Warren from North Canton, stand up! And I was like, okay, this is good, say North Canton again, this works. But it was just nice to be there and just to see the support that they had throughout the community at the Doubletree and they did a really nice job and they had a speaker from the Cleveland Clinic and so just what Cleveland Clinic has done with our community as well. And then I saw in the paper, I think it was last week, and Dave, I think that you commented on the survey that went out in the new development up on Market Street from the Altman Group, possibly, to all the neighbors. And that was, I mean, it was on the front page and I think that that's going to end up being my ward, if, if the new
Under the new map?
Yeah.
Under the new map.
Which is, is, you know
You could take the full credit.
Yeah, I know. I think what's so neat about that though is, and I think that's what is great about a small community, is, and, and what you said too about it's my ward, so I can say this or whatever, but my goodness, if you see anything great in my ward, say it. I am happy anywhere in the city. And, but I thought that was really neat that they reached out to them kind of beforehand and started to think and get ideas in, in what they were going to do. Did you, I know you had a really good comment in the paper too.
Right, and I had met with them. I think that it's important that developers not only work with the city, but work with the community. Stronger presence.
Right, and I'm excited about that project. I mean, you think about what that whole area has done and now to kind of continue in it for Walsh, so I'm just excited to be a part of that for the whole entire city, not your ward, my ward, but just all of us. I'm excited, so, those are my two things, thanks.
All right, thank you. John?
Well, short report tonight. Amy, thank you so much for the kind word, thank you for coming. We're always here to listen and hopefully help out. Along with the Altman Corporation, I, I had to meet with them right after they had the resident.
Oh, good.
And they've done their due diligence. Couldn't ask for a better company to build that than the Altons. Had a few phone calls from some different residents, solved some very minor problems. Most of it, as you're aware of, that's not our, you know, call the schools or call this or call that, led them onto the right thing, but that's my report.
Thanks. Darryl?
My eloquence is exhausted.
I like that.
Thank you for that.
Quote that.
Christina?
Yeah.
Just, I'm proud of the city and what administration really, I think stepped in and did when there was an issue at the former Kmart property and the farmer's market needed a place to go and it came here to the civic center and they've had two record weeks of attendance. I've talked with the Grosschmidt's who run the farmer's market and they've said that, you know, they think that having the shoppers walk into like a bright, clean place makes you want to spend more money rather than walking into kind of a dirty, old vacant building. So they're happy and then the vendors, I'm, I go every week and the vendors are really happy and I just think, I'm just grateful that we support that. I think the farmer's market, year-round, is such an asset. I talk to the vendors all the time and they say there's nowhere else they can go that is really open year-round, so I just think that's a huge thing for us and encourage everyone in this community to go out and shop there, 3:00 to 6:00 on Wednesdays. And that's all.
Little chunk of goodness has a new cookie coming out.
She does, Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Yep.
That's the reason to go, Mayor.
Yep.
Thank you. I'll go last, I don't have much. I don't have much. But we'll just say, please say a prayer for the Ukraine and the people that are going through so much in that area. And then back to our local area, please support our local businesses. And that's it. Final call for new business. Seeing none, let's move on to the moving, the meetings calendar. March 7th will be a committee of the whole. March 14th will be a regular city council meeting. March 21st will be a committee of the whole. And March 28th will be a city council meeting. Nothing new, no further comments? Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn? Yes? So a committee of the whole is where all the committees meet and discuss any potential business that would be upcoming to a ordinance. So it's, it's like the beginning before legislation. Oh, sure, it's open to the public. Yeah, yeah. Yep.
It's just not public speaks.
Right, there's no public speaks to it. Correct. Yes. But it is definitely open to the public. All right. Kind of a motion and a second to adjourn.
Revolt moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned.